Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. It's 5 o'clock. Please join us for the vote.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, for which it stands, when a nation undergird in this long, with every new process.
Thank you, Aaron. Would you please take the lead?
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Foiner.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbrand.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, we have everybody here. First item, is there any changes to the agenda for tonight that we should be aware of? Not, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight. I vote to approve. A second. Linda, yes, Brian, Bill.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
And Mary Ann. Yes. Next, we have our public input period. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any of your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to 30 minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council tonight?
Name is Danny Schmidt, 7:50, Ridgewood, Manchester, Iowa.
Okay.
I was down here a couple months ago talking about an efficiency committee that the council could use for getting information on subjects. And I'm going to give you a prime example why it'd be a good idea. You just voted in for this Bitcoin mining. And the council members weren't really very much informed on it, didn't know a lot about it. But if you have an efficiency committee, you pass on to the efficiency committee, let those members of the committee research it, look it up, and you can have all information instead of trying to find it later after you voted on it. Now, this would be an asset to our town. Instead of going in the dark on your votes, you know what's going on, and you can answer any questions from anybody because you'd be informed. There's people that would be on it. These aren't people that are retired, have no skin in the game, not contractors, are people that want stuff, just normal citizens. So I want you council people to think about it. I talked about it two months ago, but I never heard nothing back, but it'd be a real good idea. And that way, everybody would be informed, including the public. And that's all I got to say. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lauren Coats, live at 105th, Spurning Drive, Indiana. And I'm here in reference to the Bitcoin news that came out in the paper. I guess my question is why you as council members representing the city of Manchester, you vote for something that you know little or nothing about? I've talked to council members. What are you talking about? They did no research on it. If you guys would take the time to research what this has done to other communities, it's terrible. I mean, the noise level, 95 dB, that's like having your leaf blower running 24 hours a day in your ear. The water usage, they're going to use, our water table can't be good. We've been in the drought for three years. It's, we gotta get that built. They use, I forget how much water, how many thousands of gallons. And electricity, they use as much electricity in a day, one facility, that the whole town of Manchester uses. That's ridiculous. We got cheap electricity, and I sure don't want to start paying more for power. I just hope you take it. I do understand that somebody is going to a facility later in this week, but I hope you take the time to think about this before you allow this in here and see where their footprint is. My understanding, it's going to be out by Collins in that area. You have the play school where the kids are, you got the doll facility there, you got Colin. That's too much noise. People can't handle. I've been in the service and a lot of you guys have been in the service. You get around these loud noises, and it affects your hearing. That's why I'm deaf today. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Oh, my name is Neil, I live at 720 Fablewood Drive there in Manchester. And again, I agree with Warren there. I've done a little research on my own. And the amount of water that that facility would take, you know, it's quite a bit. I believe it's like, one, they have a Bitcoin which they call a transaction, one transaction, the Bitcoin is like four, like 4,000 gallons. And also, one transaction, the Bitcoin and megawatts, it's something like what we would facilitate our household on a monthly basis in kilowatt hours. Not only that, you know, you look at our aquifers, you know, the amount of water that's going to be required to draw out that aquifer. That's another question. Is this water going to be drawn up to cool these places down? And if so, is the water regenerated, recycled? Or are we going to continue to draw that water out of those reservoirs? Or, and then after that, after you use it, are we dumping it, are we dumping it in our rivers? That's another question. And again, you know, with this drought that we've had in the past, you know, no one understands, you know, these weather patterns or when we're getting a drought or so forth, we just, here it is. And now, you know, our neighboring counties with this pipeline coming through, you know, they're looking at drawing, there's a permit for that to draw out eight billion gallons of water annually. So with that, and then with this, you know, we've got to reserve our water. You know, it's very important for our natural resources here for our home. This is public water, our water, everybody here in Manchester. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public input period. Next, before, so you have the consent agenda. First item on consent agenda is item 3.1, approving the minutes of the December 23rd regular city council meeting. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution one, and that's approving the bills for this month, or last month, I should say. Next, I have item 3.3, acknowledging the receipt of city reports from the library, minutes from 12:12, and wastewater treatment report. Need a motion to approve the following liquor license for an off-premise Class B retail alcohol license for Dollar General. Need a motion to adopt resolution two, and that's amending a salary for a librarian who has a step increase coming. Next, I need a motion to approve the appointments of the following people for P&amp;Z, Mission, Stuart Sleeper, and Tanya Bradley. They had just, they finished up the terms for a couple people mid-year or midterm for them, so this will allow them to actually have a full term. Next, I have a motion to approve a payment of $7,597.50 to per gram for engineering services for the 2024 Street Improvement Project in East Main. Need a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance one, and that's fixing and establishing grades on several streets as listed in this ordinance. That's on the East Main Street grades, correct? And then I need a motion to set January 27th at 5:00 PM as the date and time for a public hearing on the request of Manchester Enterprises to vacate five feet of utility easement on the east side of Lot 4 and five feet of utility easement on the west side of Lot 5 in their southwest industrial park, fifth subdivision. I'll take a motion in a second, and I'll put it up for discussion.
I vote for both the consent agenda.
Take your second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, the question about approval appointments for the planning zoning commission. If I have a kind of obligation, you have to have that position.
Well, they have to be somebody in the city. They have to just be a citizen. Really?
Okay. All right. Especially in general. All right, thank you, Connie.
Item 3.7, is that the last time that we pay for a grant for the 2024 Street Improvement Project?
No. On that project, we still quite a bit left to vote on.
On the 3.8, can you elaborate a little bit more on the grading, what, I mean, is there costs?
No. It's a procedural thing as part of the-
Is this all just checking all the grades?
Yeah, it's, we have to do this every time we do a project, is do an ordinance establishing the grades because they've been adjusted.
So when we do a total reconstruction, we have to reestablish what the grades are?
What the grades are?
The grade, by grades, it's elevation, so.
Okay.
That way, people can-
The cost may be on us for doing that, or is that-
It's part of the project.
It's all part of the project.
I just want to get that clear, that.
Yep.
Great. If any further questions?
Class B, is that just for the liquor licenses, that?
Just to sell, isn't it?
It's just, it's just-
Which one is that? You don't serve it. Yeah, Class B is the off-premise.
Off-premise.
Yeah, to sell. I think the Class B, I'm not sure if that includes hard liquor or not. I think it's just beer, wine. Yeah, I think the class, they changed it, so I'm not sure on the classes anymore. Anybody else? Okay, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. It's 5:12, and opening the first public hearing on the proposed development agreement with West Schultz. And you want to speak to this, Tim?
Again, this is the development. We're working with Wes Schultz. He'll be instructing two 12-plex units on West Marion Street. He's well underway on the first 12-plex. We are agreeing, this is similar to what we did this last time with Wes, where it's a 10-year, 85% tax rebate on what's eligible to be rebated. Debt service levies are not eligible files under the school or PEP or TV, so those are not eligible for rebate. And we did a zero-interest loan with this, that he does pay back. The last time we provided him with a $50,000 zero-interest loan, he paid back half of it. We're just reissuing that loan back out of this new one.
He's still paying.
He's still paying.
He's going to pay.
Yeah, yeah. And then, so this time, because there's two 12-plexes, basically, will not exceed $500,000 in tax rebates to them, and it's a 10-year, $50,000 zero-interest loan, $25,000 per year. And when that's paid back, that will go back into our economic revolving loan fund.
And this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to ask or speak to?
I got a question. That zero-interest loan.
Can you come up to the-
That zero-interest loan, is our city paying for that, or is that through a different?
We have funds in hand, so we're not borrowing any money. It's money we are loaning out.
Again, my question, does that come from the city?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So our city's actually lending money at zero interest?
Yes.
And the amount of debt our city has, and we're doing that?
Yeah.
That's my only question.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:14. And before you, I need a motion to adopt resolution three, approving the development agreement with Wes Schultz.
I'll make a motion to adopt. I'll second it.
Any further questions from the council? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next, it's 5:15. I'm going to open up the next public hearing, and that is to discuss this is to set the date and time for public hearing on the proposed, no, this is the date and time for public hearing on a proposed general obligation loan agreement, and the amount not to exceed 1.5 million. It'll be, is that correct? Am I not on the right one? Resolution 23, that's, oh, I missed that.
He's public.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. I did skip ahead. I'm sorry.
Where?
I'm supposed to be resolution three. It's adopting the development agreement with Wes Schultz, authorizing the annual appropriations. So this is a motion to adopt what we just did for our public.
We just did that.
Okay, we just did it. Okay, so I was right. So I was right. Okay, no, no. So I was right. Okay. All right. It's okay. All right, it's Monday. Okay, so, all right, so, this is a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement for 1.5 million. It's actually going to be 1.3, 1.34 million, not the 1.5. Initially, when we were talking it over with bond counsel, we went a little bit high. So what we'll actually go out for is $670,000 on one and $670,000 on the other, so 1.34. And these will cover both Oakview and West Side Estates, correct?
That is correct.
Correct. Oakview, yeah. That one and Hill the Grand, yep. Correct.
These are development agreements, as we're looking at doing a phase two of Oakview Estates subdivision expansion and phase two of the West Side Estates subdivision expansion. Phase one, Oakview, he has 24 units, 10 units put together, or in different phases. And then, West State, West Side Estate, he has completed the three or finishing up the second or the third set duplexes and looking to start new sets of duplexes with the next phase.
Again, this is a public hearing, so if anybody has anything they'd like to say? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing at 5:17. And before you, I have, I need a motion to adopt resolution four, taking additional action on the proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement. What'll happen next is it will go out for bid, and then those bids will be brought back to the council for consideration to look through the best interest rates.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, now we're at our regular agenda items. We have information regarding simple mining, and I think discussion on this, correct?
I've been posed questions from the council, and obviously, tonight, there's questions raised. We'll start off with the water usage. When he approached me, they weren't asking for any additional water other than what they needed for their office. So they're looking at a three-quarter inch water line or one-inch water line to serve the restrooms in the office. These are not open water units, these are enclosed units, so they will not be using excessive amounts of water for anything other than what they need for the restrooms.
Air cooled.
Air cooled. Contained, similar to using freon and air conditioning.
So it'll be just a basic bathroom in office, eh?
That's correct. So I understand that the other styles out there use water to cool servers, the style of way he's got this set up, it does not. The electrical usage on this, it is a very high electrical user. That's the reason they will have a substation on their site. Sipco will be providing their power. This is coming through the Coker Valley REC. Lion Energy provides majority of the power to the city. 95% of the city is under, or Lion, excuse me. But with the way they've got this, set up this agreement, is if there's a high demand for electrical use, they will shut down while there's that high demand. This typically happens during the summer. But for the city of Manchester, we do collect franchise fees. And so they will be paying electrical franchise fees into the city of Manchester, and this is a revenue for us to look at.
What's that mean?
It's 3% on their gross revenue for gross sales franchise.
So could be possibly 50 to 70 dollars?
One of the things we need to work out yet with the development agreement with them is they were looking at closer to $500,000 a year in franchise fees. And so the city has historically allowed rebates back to our industries if they are able to waive a portion of their sales tax. The state collects on utilities if it's part of their manufacturing process. Now, I'm not wanting to waive or rebate back the full amount the state collects or state allows, because state allows 99% of their electrical use to be tax exempt. But if we can find a percentage that we will hang on to to help us continue to move forward, because again, the style of this facility, it's not a big building. It's not really any different than what you see for Google and Facebook for their data centers, except those are in large, massive buildings. These are going to be freestanding outside. They'll be an eight-by-20 cubic storage containers that have been modified and contained and open air, the way they're set up. So for us, it's a way for us to look at it and say, okay, what are we going to expect in property taxes, as this is a development inside the city? This is an alternative for our industries. It's not, we're working for welders, we're looking for different skill sets. These will be people that work with servers, replacing them, maintaining them. So it is a different opportunity for us to review. It's different. There'll be some learning curves on it. As far as the noise, there'll be fans running. It's in our industrial park, it's away from any residential structure, it's on the west side of Labuddy, which does the old halls, just north of where Straight Energy is, where their manufacturing process is there. We'll go and evaluate what the system is over in Cedar Falls later this week, but I don't think we're going to have much issue with the noise off the site.
Did he give you any indication of what, like distance, volume, decibels?
No. No. So we'll look at it when we get over there.
Right. Because Warren, we are, Linda and me are going over Friday, and we're going to visit a facility and kind of give us a better idea of what we're doing with as far as noise line and-
Can anybody go along?
No, unfortunately, no. You can do it on your own. You can definitely search up simple mining and talk to them about doing that. They do have disclosures you have to work on with them as well, because there are proprietary things that they do.
Do we have a noise ordinance in industrial park? Do you have a noise ordinance out there at all?
It has been nuisanceed.
Outside of vehicles, I don't believe we do.
Well, we did, we did implement that new noise ordinance, but I'm not sure on the industrial park, it would.
Yeah.
It was more residential.
Okay. And how many decibels? It's going to be too many decimals that's going to bother people. Then we also have to look at dryer bins in the summertime, and we have to look at, because Simons is right in industrial area.
They do a bunch of grinding out there. They fire up that. We've been out there for fires before.
I feel like it's really important, finally, decimals are going to be kicking out at us. Why, anyway, there's nothing wrong with that.
The challenge we have is we don't have a reader.
Ben, do you have an idea of decibels, like in your, like, what is considered excessive?
We had a discussion, as we were talking about the ordinance in the past, four months ago.
Yeah.
We're going to be objective, right? Just like everything we do, right? If it's egregious, then we're going to look at it. But, you know, placing a hard number on it isn't really kosher, you know? Time of day, location, you know, all of that's going to play a part, as it would for any loud noise ordinance. You know, we're going to look at it objectively at all the facts that lie with that complaint before we make a decision. So we want to know, you know, is it going to be louder during certain times of day? What's the, you know, what's the foot traffic, what's the view of traffic, any of that.
If we are going to use a decibel amount for a vector in any sort of regulation, we're going to want to spend some time going through, because, look at this, a church pipe organ can get up to 90. And it's very annoying to people with hearing aids, but people in church don't really notice the difference. But 90 is a fairly loud number if it's a really annoying noise instead of a pipe organ playing. So we really would want to spend some time figuring out, just the reading itself won't get you the regulation you want.
Right. Well, I know, like, with the railroad, a train horn is supposed to be at X amount of decibels, it's like 50 feet away or whatever it is, at six foot high or whatever their wording is.
Yeah.
So, and that's how they test whether or not the train horn is effective at that point. So, and then as far as testing the decibels, I agree that noise is something to be concerned about, but we'd also have to look at XL trailers in the middle of summer when all the doors are open, Henderson Products with all the doors open, or we have in decibels with them guys banging on metal and stuff like that. So just something to kind of consider as well.
Okay, I had also found out that Bitcoin puts out a lot of CO2 emissions.
Yep. CO2. Yep.
How? Well, here in energy.
I can tell you, just because I remember reading my, my son's an IT guy, I learned it from him. I don't know crap. The CO2 emissions come from the use of electricity. So they measure the amount of electricity and fossil fuels being used to create the electricity are then measured as a, creating CO2. The actual plant doesn't create it, but using electricity does.
Okay. So that's where the footprint's-
That's where that footprint comes from.
It's not here, it's back where, I mean, the electricity's in there.
And it just dawned when he said that, when my son was giving my education, remember, he said something about they liked Iowa because we have renewable fuels that helps them, at least arguably say they're, I don't know how much, but lets them argue that they're reducing their footprint in Iowa. But the machines themselves don't create it, but apparently, because a large amount of electricity can.
Okay, another question. How much is simple mining paying us to lease the property?
We don't own it.
It's not, we don't, they bought it. Oh, they bought it. And it's Manchester Enterprises. We don't own any land out there in the industrial park. Thank you.
Warren, did that, or, go ahead. No, it's back to the noise. That's 24 hours a day. There is no variance in the cooling, you know. You have 50, what are you saying, 50 computers and 100 coolers. That noise level is 24 hours a day. If, you know, you live on this end of town, the wind from the south, you can hear the train clear up there, and it's loud. But that, that is not going to be good for people in their hearing.
Well, this isn't an open time now, guys, I'm sorry. This is discussion for the council. I'm sorry, I apologize.
A friend of mine that works for a cell company, he would go into their booths they had underneath cell towers. They would have air conditioners, just basic window air conditioners, set up with a vent. He could set, he could run two airs. If it was 110 degrees out, he could run both air conditioners. The winter time, he'd open his vents up. When it's 10, 10 degrees outside, he could turn the fan on. He's just trying to keep his equipment cool on the inside. He never used any water, waters. He didn't want water around his equipment at all, you know? So he didn't use any fancy heaters, fans, it was just more of a cool down the air inside the, inside the building. And those buildings were only, I suppose, they were 10 by 16, you know, on the average ones I ever went into, which was neat, but yeah, it was just, he was just using air conditioners.
But imagine when it's cooler outside, it probably spread out the central to here, colder in the winter.
It'll be nice when we get over there.
And we can see this.
And actually can see and hear and-
Well, and I will let you know, I sat at the P&amp;Z meeting when the planning zoning was talking to them, and they asked questions, same questions. And that is my, that is our efficiency people, our board of adjustment, our P&amp;Z, those kinds of people, they are doing those services for us. So what they were doing is they were approving the site plan. There isn't anything that the city was giving them. They were approving a site plan, which was an industrial park. They asked all those other questions. And I think it was unfortunate, I think they posted it in the Telegraph Herald, that it was water cooled, when that was not correct. And I did get a question about, you know, the fire department.
And I did get a question about, you know, the fire department, you know, is that going to be a special thing for our fire department? I talked to Randy Rattenberg, the chief, the other night, and he said, no. I did have one other lady who called me from Earlville and brought up a couple of questions, but they were going to be leasing from them. And they had some other questions, but one of her safety issues was something that had to do with the electric company, had nothing to do with simple mining. So I'll send that question. We'll have to ask R E C about that question. So yes, they, they asked those questions, and we had the gentleman here the other day, you know, so. And I know Tim had talked to each of us previously alone to kind of preheat us what was coming. And it was going to be very different than some of the businesses that we had come before, so.
And I gave you the, the name of the website for you to check them out.
Yes. So it will be interesting to find out what you guys see when, are able to go over there. I can't take off, so.
Well, I was just concerned that people in town know what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's really important. Yeah.
It was a big thing to get the information out that people aren't aware of, especially with water and electricity now that, you know, it's R E C. And it's not upon, on us, on Alliance. That's, that's a big, big deal. And then as far as the, the water consumption, you know, if it's air cooled, they're only going to use flush and toilets. And that's, that was my, one of my concerns was the water usage, so. That helps me out. And then once we visit the facility, then hopefully get a better idea. I'm a hands-on guy, so I like to be able to see it here, you know?
Any other questions? You ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I got to have item six point two. I need a motion to approve a payment of four thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents to Kirk and Michael. And this is for the Manchester Municipal Airport Runways Resurcising Project. Tim, we're going to speak to this.
This is part of a H and G, we agreed to back in November when we notified the work from FAA for a project. They are doing their due diligence, getting the planning put together, starting to offer bids later on. This is the first bill that exists.
I'm just looking for a motion this second to approve the payment.
I move. I still move.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any further questions? Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I need a motion, potentially waive the second consideration ordinance eighteen and proceed with the third and final consideration. And this is.
Waive the second reading and consider the third.
For the official zoning map of Manchester. Okay. All right.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian? Linda?
Yes.
Need the third.
Yes, now I just need a motion for the third.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
I'm just going to keep going. And Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
All right. We had talked about this at the last meeting too regarding a motion to potentially waive second consideration ordinance nineteen and proceed with the third and final consideration. And this is for ordinance nineteen, which is, have the one I just. West, 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 there. Yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to waive the second.
I'll settle that. Okay. Any questions? Joe?
Yes.
Linda? Ryan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Mary Ann? And then I'll look for the third motion. All right. Look for a motion with a third consideration.
I'll look for the third consideration.
I'll second.
Linda? Yes. Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
I'll do that quickly, guys. Thank you. All right, finally. Yep, I need a, this is a motion to waive the second consideration ordinance twenty and proceed with the third. And this is amending the Code of Ordinances provisions pertaining to regulation on residential siding materials on accessory buildings.
Tim, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, again, this was an ordinance we adopted actually two thousand fifteen. We changed the size of the lot that wouldn't allow our residential steel to be on an accessory building, from two acres down to one acre. They had to have a minimum of seven hundred and twenty square feet. When we did our codification, this ordinance got missed. It was not included in our codification. So we're bringing this back to the council, finding it's under commission to review this again, revisit it. They are moving, wanting to move forward with, again, allowing residential steel on accessory buildings in our residential district on acres of properties, one acre or more, on six hundred square feet or larger. So they did drop that square footage minimum requirement down to six hundred to seven hundred and seventy.
But still has to be at least a one acre.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion to waive second consideration. I'll second, I'll second.
All right. Any further questions? Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian? And then I'll look for the third.
I get that one.
You get that one? All right.
Now you can second.
I'll second it.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
And we have some nuisance property updates.
We had three actions that we were talking about filing last night I was here, and they've all been served now. RJ told me we got a call today, got a message we didn't talk from one of the people we served. Wanted to just pay the fine and go away, and with our procedure, we're not going to do that. We're going to go to abate the nuisance. We'll call him back tomorrow and make sure he knows that, but they're all been served and.
Is the trailer?
One he got served in, we got one set for trial in February already, and the other two haven't been set.
So is one, the junk still sitting in the driveway then? Do we know?
I don't know. I don't even know by name.
Okay, Gay Street.
Gay Street?
As far as I know, it's still there.
It's still there. Okay.
Grant Lincoln and Third Street. I don't.
Yeah, Jim is at the bottom, Tim's left. They hold it up into a trailer. They haven't held it off as far as I know yet.
Thank you for keeping us up to date on.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Do I have any engineers here? Oh, there's two.
I don't have any.
You don't have anything tonight unless somebody's got a question? No. And there's nobody from program here tonight? Okay. All right.
Other than, I think that he, I think Tim passed out the council procedures thing I found in the league. When I was looking up, I just, I find it, we always talk about, you know, how do we do a motion to reconsider? How do we do those? And you hear these terms all the time, but when you actually think about doing them, I thought these were pretty helpful. We should pass them out again, but.
Yeah, I think.
Would you go and use them? It just, this comes straight out of the Iowa League handbook for city councils. I was looking for something else and I came across it. I just thought it was helpful, so just provided for your own. Now, remember, we don't have any particular set of rules in place for how we operate the council, so we don't have, we haven't adopted Robert's rules or adopted any specific set of rules. So in my mind, I kind of go by what the league's telling us because that's our closest guidance we have. And it's a good way to, for you to have it. I, I just think if I was on the council, I would like to know the. I used to carry a book with me to court, so I'd know how to say the motion the right way. Same kind of thing. If I need to make a motion or an objection, there's a certain way to say it or a certain way to do these. So it's kind of help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Tim?
We're way deep in the budget season. Next Monday night will be our first budget work session with the department heads. We did see some growth within the city. We saw five percent growth at Woodhouse by seven eighteen. That growth did get rolled back, so rough numbers, they're looking at about fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand dollars roughly in new general fund dollars to pay for fire, lease, library, recreation, all the other things that come out of the general fund. We were told insurance increases on property insurance would be about ten percent. We're looking at about fifteen percent increases for health insurance. workers' comp is the only one that's committed a zero percent increase, but we had a huge increase last year. So we're seeing some changes and some challenges. We'll look at ways to put our budgets together. We'll talk to the council about that, what we're doing here. But it looks to be a little more challenging than we only have in the past, even with growth. I'll be honest, I don't know how these smaller towns are going to do it. Because for a small town, a new house will increase their valuation by more than thirty percent, and that gets rolled back. So a two percent increase for a small town might be two thousand dollars. And how do you do that? Well, I wasn't talking, it's a small town, so it's small. But yeah, it's, there's going to be some very difficult decisions made throughout numerous communities across the state line. But we will meet you in front of one night, next Monday night.
It starts at five.
By the clock here. Both of me and I have got my daughter moved safely to Houston. Thankfully.
Yes.
I do not recommend that you all travel. All right, that's all I have.
Aaron?
Nothing.
Brian? Okay, Linda?
Nothing.
Mary Ann? Joe?
Yeah, I just, tonight marked five years ago when I got in that railroad accident. And I just wanted to thank the Dyersville Police Department, the EMS there in Dyersville, medical providers of Mercy, University of Iowa, and our own here, Dr. May. So Drew Wogan Bush was the first guy to show up at the accident that night, and he was able to keep my composure to a point where I didn't go into shock. And I'll always be thankful for him for that. I actually got to see him at the Back Blue event this past year, got to shake his hand. And it was the second time I've seen him. This is the first time I wasn't in a neck brace and walker. And Dr. May worked with me throughout the years getting, so I could have my life back. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all those guys for everything they've done for me, so.
Bill?
One thing, I've had about nine people ask me, can we figure out the stoplights at the four-way? Can you explain what's going on?
The site controller, which is the little computer that's inside there, runs the cameras and triggers how things work. That went down on us, what, around Christmas time? By the time we grabbed, we got ahold of somebody to get them in to look at it, it was after the first of the year because of the holidays. They looked at it, they, they said the site logic or whatever that controller is, is bad. Multi-month, six months to eight months out to get a new one.
Really?
Yes. So we got a loner one, and the loner one is now acting up. It's now running on a time cycle as opposed to running off of the cameras. There is potential that, trying to figure out why the loner one's acting up. If it goes bad, the other potential is for us to take the control module out of Madison Street intersection, Madison and Main, turn it into a four-way stop. Put it up there on Butler Street, so we have something up there trying to get that to work. Not sure exactly what's causing the issue up there right now. And then we found out when the power went out Christmas night, acre street is supposed to be on battery backup, but the inverter is not charging the batteries up there. So we'll have to take the inverter out, send that in and get that repaired. I think that is under warranty though. So, yeah, traffic lights are, it was a little bit of fits.
Because they just got the one up at the library fixed.
Well, that's another reason.
Yeah.
But a couple of people did say at least it's on a timer because before it was flashing. Nobody stopped, and then everybody trying to leave the school or church, they couldn't get out.
And the pedestrian crossing buttons wouldn't work on that at that point, so.
What, are they crossings working now then?
By the time we get them to work, yes.
Uh, no, that's all I got.
Is that a part that we can keep on hand for?
It's expensive. We don't usually, but they don't fail that often either. So we're not sure.
We just got lucky.
Oh, and they do, they do it in bear some?
Bear, well, the northern one is the inverter for charging the batteries for the backup.
No, I mean, like you said, the loner one has issues too, so.
Well, who knows, it could have been Southern Iowa.
I am, if anybody's interested, I'm giving the service awards, the balance of those to the fire department tonight after the meeting. If anybody wants to come and see that, you're more than welcome to join me. I went ahead and I made potential committee assignments for twenty twenty-five for the council. I'd have you guys check these. I, you know, Tim, the strings don't always allow people to view it, I mean to view it. If you guys want to look through those, I thought I made five copies. Oh, I needed six. I'm sorry. I'll let you guys look at that. You guys can look at them if you guys want to swap something around, just let me know. So that's kind of what I did for the upcoming year.
Changes then just a little bit from last year.
Just a little bit. Last year, yeah, just a little bit. So you can look at those, and, and when we get together next Monday night, you can let me know what you think, okay? I don't have anything else. Just want to thank the fire, or the police department. Did you have a big turnout at your movie?
Yeah, we had a hundred and fifty-seven show off that we gave away. It was sixty-seven kids cups.
Oh, wow.
We're all pretty good.
That's awesome. Awesome. And I want to commend you. I had a meeting with a little help group, and they, I think I sent you a private text about that. Just very pleased and happy about the working relationship between your department and them and everything. It's been very, very nice. So thank you.
Are we not reading and signing those proclamations?
Yes. Did she get that? Oh, do you know what? I didn't call you back. No, she doesn't, she's going to have it for the February meeting. Is that the one that you want to do because somebody was going to be here? Did we mess that up? Did we mess that up? I'm so sorry. I was wondering who you were sending there. I apologize. Because I talked to Laura about it, and then I think there was, we had a cross in the dates or something when we were sending them back and forth, so.
Proclamation.
It's the one for.
The human traffic.
This is, yes, we are declaring National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Yes, and it's for the month of January, correct though? Yes, because then, yes. So I thought she said that she, you wanted to put it off until February because somebody was going to come up with you.
So Kirk Guyton?
Yes.
Wanted, he, he wanted to be involved in, and I think she was trying to get to her next council meeting, which is like the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh, yes, yeah.
She was hoping to do that, but.
Okay, okay.
We can do photo op.
Yeah, we can do the photo op though tonight, if that's okay? Yeah, but we are declaring that, we'll make that known right now, that we are declaring this National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. For, it's a national, it is national, correct?
It's national.
Yes, yes. So yeah, absolutely. And do you want to talk to everybody here in a minute? I'll give you a moment to tell everybody about yourself and everything. Yes.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm Teresa Davidson. I'm the CEO of Chains Interrupted, which is a nonprofit that fights against human trafficking for children in Iowa. We're based out of Cedar Rapids, but we fight against them all across the state. And it's difficult to imagine that human trafficking exists in Iowa communities, but it does. Take the case of Leila, name changed for privacy, a sixteen-year-old girl who got away from her trafficker that brought her to Iowa from another state. She was found hiding in a business in Cedar Rapids. Leila didn't know who to trust and was too scared to be forthcoming about her situation. Fortunately, this business had received training by Chains Interrupted and recognized the signs of trafficking. And from that training, they also knew how to talk to the teen in a way that didn't scare her off or traumatize her further. They called Chains Interrupted to talk them through the next steps, and we are happy to report that the girl is safe and back with her family in the state that she came from. This is one example of many. I worked with over four hundred survivors in the last five years in this area. So thank you, Mayor Benton, and the city council, law enforcement, educators, and community leaders of Manchester for your commitment to raising awareness and taking action to combat human trafficking in your community. If you, your friends, family, workplace, church, school, or community group are interested in any of our eighteen specialized trainings, please contact us at chainsinterrupted.com.
Thank you so much, Teresa. And again, I apologize for that communication. All kind of came in through around Christmas time, I think, so that was part of it. But anyway, but we'll get a photo op, yeah. Okay. All right. I have nothing else in addition to that, so thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. And I take a motion from Brian, the second of Linda, that we're adjourned, and we're adjourned. Thank you.